All right. It is seven oh one. I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. It is May third, two thousand and eighteen. We'll begin this meeting as we do all others. Catherine, if you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will open the floor for public comment, if anyone has any. We don't have a very full house today. Seeing none, we'll proceed with the business of our meeting. The first item is our student report. And Catherine, if I could take a moment of your time, if it's all right, I would like, the board would like to say, thank you. You have been an insightful addition to our board this year. Your willingness to share your experience as a student and your perspective has been awesome to watch. You are a very, very positive representative of yourself as a woman and of the students of New Market, and we are very proud of you, and we wish you the best of luck at University of Southern Maine next year. Thank you for diligently coming to all the meetings and representing your fellow New Market students very well. Any thoughts from anybody else?
I think things are gonna happen with us.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I'm the same, but you give a very professional, refined presentation. You present very well, so wherever you learn that or if it's natural, it's a good thing, and you're, I think, ahead in the game, so.
Very much so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We think you should open it.
Yes, yes.
Are you gonna do it right now?
Yes, please, please.
Trust us. You can read the fine print in my car.
Yes.
You might want some college swag.
You are welcome. And please come back. We know that great things are gonna happen for you, and we'd love to hear about them in future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Catherine, when you get yourself situated, if you'd like to proceed with your report. You know, one of the reasons why we had to do this, we know that graduation is not until June eighth, but our meetings sort of get spotty over the next few weeks, and we wanna make sure that we recognize you in a meeting, so go ahead.
All right. So, at the elementary school this week, the PTA Spring Teacher Luncheon is going to be Wednesday, May ninth, and the garden club and NES golf teams have officially started. For sports, the baseball is currently at a record of six to one. Their next game is home Monday, May seventh, against PCA at four thirty. Softball has a record of four to two. Their next game is also home Saturday, May fifth, against Oyster River at twelve. Track has their next meet on May eighth at Sanborn Regional High School at four P M. For the junior senior high school, junior prom is tomorrow, so that's exciting, and grand march will be at five P M. There is a parent meeting about standards-based grading on Wednesday night, Wednesday, May ninth, at six thirty P M. Salt.
Just say, I think that's really targeted for eighth grade parents, yep.
Salt is hosting a high school dance, which will be Thursday, May tenth, at seven P M. There's a half day on May eleventh. Lots of things going on May eleventh. There will be a blood drive at the school on Friday, May eleventh, and that starts from two P M to seven P M. Those who would like to register, that's all online, and you can either come in for appointment or by walk-in, so it is recommended that you register for it. New Market Cares Day is also May eleventh, from eleven A M to five P M, and that's hosted by the Interact Club. And then the last Project Rad Bingo will be Saturday, May twelfth.
Perfect, thank you. Meredith, would you like to do your report?
Well, sure. Thank you, Catherine. I know right before vacation, and we had vacation and we've only had a few days since, but right before vacation was Career Fair at the junior senior high school, and I heard overall really positive comments, and I had the opportunity to kind of sit with all of the presenters who were able to stick around during lunch, who had really good feedback about just overall how they might partner with us in supporting students and kind of building that work moving forward. So, again, kudos to Ryan LaVassar for his efforts on that front. Let's see. Chief Justice John Broderick is coming on May twenty-third to speak to students at the junior senior high overall about mental health, how to sort of be aware of mental health issues as they arise in your community and how you can provide support. And his campaign really is about de-stigmatizing that. He works with Dartmouth Hitchcock on this campaign at this point. We had hoped when we originally scheduled with him to try to do a parent evening, but we haven't been, weren't able to find a date that worked with his schedule, that worked with our event schedule, because May twenty-third is also the concert, end of year concert for the junior senior high and.
Music hall.
So, you know, we look forward to having him come back in the future, but if there are community members or parents who are interested in attending that talk, if you wanna reach out to our office, we can try to accommodate you based on available seating on that day.
And what time is it?
One, one or one thirty. I would need to confirm that, but.
But that's on the twenty-third as well.
Twenty-third of May. Moving along. Special education, there are a number of compliance pieces that the state reviews. This year, one of the other pieces that they looked at, and you've had a couple of these in your packet from time to time, this one was a Indicator Twelve, which is around early transitions. So, again, we're a hundred percent in compliance on that particular one for making sure that our early childhood students who are entering into services from the district at age three, that everything is in place for them so that there's not a gap in services for them. So, again, we appreciate those efforts. I have two other things to share with you. I'll start with this one, I think. Send one extra down for Jim. Maybe two can share, maybe. So, at our last business meeting, we learned sadly that Assistant Superintendent Chris Andruski, sadly for us, not sadly for him, will be moving on to the Exeter School District in an Assistant Superintendent role. And so, we haven't had a lot of time to flesh out all of the details of this, obviously, but I've worked with the administrative team, was able to meet with the association president to talk through some of these pieces, so I'm just gonna walk through this. This is not in proposal form at this point. This is just sort of highlighting conceptually what we're thinking about for that position. I would anticipate coming back to you with some draft job descriptions and trying to move this process forward in the next few weeks. So, what we're considering is creating, rather than an Assistant Superintendent position, rather than replace that position, what we've talked about is creating an additional Assistant Principal, Building Coordinator position. Right now, we have one of those. That person right now is a special ed building coordinator who is split between the two buildings. We would anticipate having essentially a principal and two assistant principals in each building in this proposed format with shared responsibility for special education, because one of the things that we really wanna look at as a district moving forward is not having special ed over here and everyone else over here. We really believe that all of our job is to serve all students, and that the more we integrate those efforts, the more effective we'll be. Related to that, in order to fulfill some of the other responsibilities, we've had discussions about creating teacher leadership positions to support some of the other work. So, those positions would be compensated at additional contract days at their per diem rate to lead essentially the curriculum work in different areas. So, they would replace the existing department head structure that we have, and they would begin to subsume those responsibilities, but they also would be. Let me back up. So, imagine that we have multiple content areas, English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, Mathematics, World Language, our Unified Arts, for example. We would envision having maybe a math curriculum person at grades six through twelve in grades pre-K through five. Maybe we would have a couple people who represent pre-K two and who split those curriculum areas, and a couple people who represent grades three to five and split those curriculum areas. They would then be one big team, district-wide, who would work together to help move us forward with the curriculum and instructional work that we're focused on.
So, getting rid of the curriculum coordinator position completely?
Yes, replacing it instead with a building-level administrative position to provide some of the support that we've heard from our building administrators.
So, two people would be hired? Two?
No, we already have one.
One person?
Yep. So that we right now have two, a principal and assistant principal in each building, and then we have the building coordinator who's divided between the two. So, we would instead have, with one additional person, that person would allow us to have three people in each building focused on meeting special ed and general ed administrative needs.
Okay, and then, so that person who is doing the coordination now is basically coordinating specialized between the two buildings?
Yes. Which we did five years ago. I think we, five years ago, we got rid of the other position, and it's been something we've been talking about back and forth, taking the position out of here and moving it into a building and hiring somebody else. We have to discuss that. My, again, my concern is just in the S A U, having one person in charge, we learned, when you can't get that person, that person's not intangible, and emergency happens, there was, we as a board always felt having that second person on was important, so that's.
So, I think you have multiple other people on in the form of your support, and I'm not, we're not hashing this out right now fully, but I would say I feel like we do have multiple people in, with the support of Finance Director and Business Administrator as well as the Student Support Coordinator position.
With not a second in charge, we would have to name somebody second in charge, right?
We do that on an ongoing basis. Mr. Andruski and I have been out of the district at the same day throughout the year, and other people are assigned to be responsible in my absence. If I were absent long-term, that's a decision you would have to make in that time, just like we do if a building administrator is absent long-term.
The reason why I bring up that, again, that's one of the reasons we had that assistant put in there, and that's why I wanted to discuss in public.
Yeah, but I think that's an important, important piece.
That that would be fulfilled, but how do we, how do you, and you'll have to explain it, she was maybe enough of it, how that happens, because it's never happened before. We've never had that second in charge in the time I've been here.
I think the thing that, that you may be getting at is, we're not dealing with the office on a daily basis, or when any person is not dealing with the office on a daily basis, we are not cognizant of the times that both of you are out of the office and somebody else is doing it.
Sure, right.
And we use that title to reassure us, but they're not always both there, and we just don't know that, because.
Right, and we knew before, for two years, we knew, because there was A, crisis all the time, and B, there was no way to take care of it.
And, yeah, and you were also in a situation where you had a part-time interim superintendent, right? And, you know, I, I hope to be here on a full-time basis.
Well, that's what I just wanted to say, because again, I wanna remind them why we put that assistant in there, and now you can tell us.
Sure. So, let me walk through the rest of this and then let's circle back to that. So, the teacher leader responsibilities, again, our focus really is on making sure that we continue the momentum that we have on curriculum work and instructional work pre-K twelve. So, those teacher leaders would meet with the building administrative team on a monthly basis, as well as with, at the building level, as well as with me on a regular basis, pre-K twelve. And that might be monthly at the outset and fade back to every other month, you know, as we get sort of those systems up and running. Those teacher leaders would also coordinate as part of their additional day responsibilities, the annual curriculum meetings that occur with staff under our collective bargaining agreement. And so, we'll, we'll be drafting sort of a job description for those positions. It's already begun. Mr. Andruski is, has taken on that particular piece, and Erica McNeil is working to redraft a building coordinator position that blends the Assistant Principal and Special Ed Coordinator roles. And I will say Christina Cochran, who's our existing Special Ed Coordinator, is a blend of both of those roles. Her administrative credential is actually that of an Assistant Principal, not as a Special Ed Administrator, but she brings both of those things to the table. There are other responsibilities, obviously, that our Assistant Superintendent carries, so I've kind of listed out what some of those are and how we would envision dividing those up. One responsibility is that of the homeless liaison. Erica McNeil, our Student Support Coordinator, we feel like could assume those responsibilities. Professional Development and Certification, Penny Botterman in our office already handles a large chunk of those responsibilities, and I would pick up the pieces that Chris currently handles. Our master plan for professional development, fortunately, due to the good work that's happened over the last year and some, is now in effect through two thousand and twenty-two, so that gives us a really nice window to continue the implementation of that, but not be racing to update it. The Title One Grant, which she now administers, would shift to the elementary principal. That grant has shrunk, as you may remember. In recent years, it used to be a larger administrative task. It is now reduced to a one-teacher position essentially, and so the management of that is fairly small.
And Meredith, I'm gonna ask the question that I always ask. That's the one for support services for kids that don't qualify for other forms of special ed sometimes?
It is not a special ed service.
Okay.
It is a service, federal government-funded service, to meet the needs of the lowest quartile of students in your population, both in reading or math, depending on how you've written the grant. For us, it has serviced both. Moving forward, it right now is written to service reading, moving into next year, because we're only carrying that one teacher position.
Okay.
But we have a list of requirements we have to meet in terms of assessment and how we determine which students fall into that pool for service delivery.
Okay.
And, and student, that's fluid, right? Students aren't assigned there from day one and stay there through day three hundred and, or one hundred and eighty-one. Students move in and out of that based on the data.
I get confused between one and two, which one's student, which one's PD.
So, Title Two is the Professional Development Grant, which again has shrunk in recent years. So, that grant would move to the S A U level, and again, our business office supports those grants in terms of all the processing and the drawdowns and the fiscal monitoring pieces, but that would move to me. The Professional Development Committee, we are hopeful we'll elect a chair among its members to take on that role. And again, our office can certainly provide some of the administrative support in terms of minuteskeeping or that kind of documentation, if that's helpful. Infinite Campus is our student information system, and we have trained up several folks this year to kind of continue to build our capacity. Chris and Jason Carey were trained up last year as Tom Pedletus was leaving his Guidance Director role, and we've expanded that training to bring our data manager and our high school guidance counselor and our high school Assistant Principal into the fold a little bit so that everyone has some more expertise. And I will say that the registrar function at both schools is filled by an administrative assistant who processes the paperwork and does the initial data entry, and so those pieces would continue. Teacher evaluation, again, that plan was recently updated. You heard about it at the last meeting. We hope to approve that tonight, so there's not pressing immediate work to do on that front. There's an established committee that would come together if it needed to hear appeals about the evaluation process, but there's not immediate work in front of that group. And then the teacher mentoring program was coordinated the last couple of years by Assistant Superintendent Andruski, and I would envision that also returning to a teacher leader position with some additional contracted days. It's a really important piece for us, and we wanna make sure that we're training our mentors and supporting them through the process. So, we anticipate that we can finance all of this within existing budget for next year using the salary and associated benefits attached to Assistant Superintendent Andruski's position, as well as some existing stipends in place for department heads. They're not this size, but that it basically comes out pretty even. You know, again, this is sort of an early discussion. Faculty will be just hearing about this tomorrow as well, so we certainly want some time to get feedback. At the same time, we also don't wanna wait too long to try to hire for an administrative position, and we'd love to fill those teacher leader positions in early June so that we can put some training in place at the end of this year for that cadre of people so that they are ready to hit the ground running in the fall if this gets approved.
Do you want us to ask questions?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'm done.
I mean, no, I meant about the teacher leaders. Or do you want us to wait till after you discuss with them? So, would that be a volunteer, so obviously, we're hoping that somebody's gonna volunteer.
Yeah, I would think we, I anticipate that we post for these positions, and teachers say, wow, what a great way to build my skills, to share with the community, and get paid appropriately to do that work.
Right, and so we're saying that, because right now, the stipend, I won't say the number, but it's not a great one. So, you're looking into adding a little bit to that.
Right, the stipends. So, the stipends that people receive as department chairs are, and that's, they're only in place at the junior senior high, but it's an allocation of roughly four hundred dollars per person in your department.
Oh.
So, a teacher, the teacher leader positions would be based on a person's per diem rate. So, their hundred and eighty-six days, their salary divided by the hundred and eighty-six days, that's the daily rate, and we would multiply that by ten. So, we're looking at stipends probably on average in the thirty-five-hundred-dollar range. So, you know, a nice incentive for some additional work.
One of the things also that I like about that piece of it is, you know, we talk often about strategic planning and all these different things, and this is a great way for teacher leaders to lead in real ways and to have an impact on the district that can help them within the district and beyond. And I think that that's something that's benefited to all of us.
Yeah, I mean, I think as an organization, you know, your health comes from, from building, you know, the strength of everyone you have within it, and.
You're the organization.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think we are well poised. We have some great leadership already in our schools, and let's compensate people for doing the real work that needs to be done here moving forward and grow them, you know, if they wanna move on to future positions, should they open up here?
Yeah.
Not elsewhere. They won't, we won't let them leave us, but.
Well, no, maybe they won't, because that's, that's pretty, you know, in New Market world, right? We have not been able to do something like that.
So, Meredith, is it, maybe it's an obvious question, but is it functionally better to have these folks in the building so they can be with folks and see what's going on on a daily basis versus being up here and not?
So, I mean, I wasn't here through the previous curriculum coordinator role. Certainly, our Assistant Superintendent makes an effort to be in the buildings on an ongoing basis, and it's my impression that Pat certainly did that in her capacity on a regular basis. I think it's a different role in that I'm there more as your peer. I'm not your supervisor, right? I can, as a teacher leader, I'm giving you feedback, I'm having dialogue with you. We're wrestling with the questions and the issues, and how do we make this work? As opposed to the administrator in the room having that dialogue with you, which just is a different, it's a different dynamic.
It is.
And I appreciate that.
It's a different person supervising.
Yeah.
And it changes the attention.
And it, and it doesn't mean that our administrators don't have healthy, positive relationships with our teachers, but I, but I do think it changes the dynamic without, without us even being aware of it or intending for that to happen, it just changes.
Is this the structure, this whole structure, Meredith, that you see in other districts?
Certainly, a lot of other districts have teacher leader positions that, you know, every district sort of has to figure out what makes the most sense for its needs and its resources. I think this is a great time for us to be kind of sharing the responsibilities. I think, again, we've gained some good momentum. I think it's a great time to kind of help the teachers bring this work forward, because ultimately, curriculum and instruction are not administrative work, right? We support it, but it's teacher work.
Could you explain, like, the existing department heads there? You have the math department head, or the, I guess, the social studies department head, and others. What's the functional day-to-day difference of that role versus these, you know, these roles we're proposing?
Yeah, so, based on my conversations with Principal Mizony, this work, this proposed shift in the work is more meaningful, because it's gonna allow for those folks, and not that they haven't been allowed to do it as department heads, but I think it, it formalizes a relationship K twelve, for one. It also really builds in that planned, purposeful, I'm gonna come into your classroom next week and see what's going on with, you know, that, those new material, how are those new reading materials working that we just spent money on, right? It, I think it really expands the role in a healthy, positive way. And as we're looking at universal design, as we're doing this competency-based work, that's not work administrators can do without the support of great teachers. And so, I think it's honoring that work in a really tangible way.
Yep. And getting, you know, getting the buy-in on all the levels too, and participation in the process.
Yes, I mean additionally, structurally, department heads have done a lot of sort of quasi-administrative tasks, right? Like, they have processed some purchase orders and laid out the budget plans for their department. That doesn't necessarily change at a junior senior high level in that, you know, if I'm the science department chair, yeah, I should be having a conversation with the folks in my department or the science curriculum person. I should be having a conversation about what do we need for science materials. So, that role, I think, still very much fits, but now I also have a K twelve lens on, on what's happening with those purchases, and we haven't really had that before in the teacher, at the teacher level.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. It seems like, you know, just from my own experience having kids in the system, it seems like there is some coordination, and I don't wanna undersell it or oversell it. I don't know all the minutia, but we have separate buildings, but we shouldn't have, should all sort of be one, right? I mean, because I like the idea of the teams having a team from both schools.
We have the benefit of having two schools that are very walkable walking distance, and, you know, it's, it's a benefit to all of us to have that whole K, well, pre-K through twelve concept for these kids, because it benefits indirectly. And we have the benefit of just having the two schools that a lot of places don't have.
Just the communication between the buildings, I like that as well. That's something that we, it's hard to do when you just have a superintendent, assistant coordinator.
Sure.
You know, this way we can intermingle, switch it up and you get to know the, the incoming kids. I, I, this is, I'm liking, I'm liking this.
Or maybe there's, maybe there's an educator in the other building that you would never have come in contact with that has a whole different perspective for you. He or she can teach you that new way in a more organized fashion and again, the students benefit, the employees benefit for the growth. I mean, it's a win-win for everybody.
Um, one of the, one of the things we anticipate, um, it, again, if this is approved, we'd be doing intensive training for those teacher leaders at the end of June. Um, I really want them to be, as a group, um, to be able to dive deeply into data and feel like they're really comfortable with the tools that we have. To have some additional training in group facilitation strategies and, and how to, um, uh, do some strategic planning around curriculum work so that they feel like they're really empowered to, to be successful. Um, I can envision that these teacher leaders also might take additional professional days. Um, they might take a couple of people from their department to go visit another school, for example. Or to, um, you know, we often tell teachers, take a professional day, do some planning with your colleagues. And, and that's difficult, I think, for teachers to do because they feel guilty about being out of the classroom and they don't want to burden their colleagues with additional work.
And it's hard to be out of the classroom.
It's very hard to be out of the classroom and they also don't have, and you have to, exactly, right? Not only do I have to, I have to do the additional work in order to do the work.
Yes.
But I think having someone who can help facilitate some of that, right? Help coordinate that or even step in and I could go cover your class as a depart- as a teacher leader so that you can visit another classroom. So.
So this, this sounds good and the other part I like is that, no, I know. You don't, there's not a lot of time that people understand what, what Amy Rossi does. And I think if you have these leaders that are looking at this data and then they, it can spread out, oh no, actually this is what happens. And this is why we do what we do. And like this could, it's a good informational tool for everybody. So I.
And I really envision, you know, again, who knows, who knows, who knows what's going to happen right tomorrow? But if I'm looking three to five years out, we probably are not going to need three building administrators in each school in three to five years. But over the next few years, as we're grappling with some real paradigm shifts that are occurring in education, I think it's going to be helpful to have those extra supports in place a- as we're also building this teacher capacity. And, and again, three to five years out, I think two building administrators in each of our schools, based on our current student population, should be adequate. But, but we've got to do some work to get, to get us there so that we can sustain it.
I also like the thought of the, the leaders, we have parent night. You actually have the, the class lead, the.
Curriculum content area leader.
Thank you. There to answer my questions and, you know, explain how things are changing and how is this going to affect my child's education? I, that sounds, that's something that will benefit our community as well.
Cause as Meredith said, we have some major paradigm shifts for parents, for educators, for students coming with competency based, with universal design for learning, all sorts of stuff. And we're going, it's going, it's going to take some time to help people understand what that looks like. Um, and.
But don't pay the price.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we do because like that's when, you know, the, the little, little fire blows up into a big storm. And if we can say, you know what, we're going to have a meeting and please come so that you can begin to understand it. And then hopefully people will start hearing about them and start coming.
Meredith, the, um, the building, the extra building coordinator, do you have an idea where that person might be seated or the?
Well, so I, I think we, we would probably see what our applicant pool looked like, see what the strengths were. You know, Christina Cochran again, already has the advantage of having worked in both, both of our schools. Um, so that gives us some real flexibility in looking at the pool.
And physically in the buildings, is there space for them?
Oh, yeah, physically in the buildings. Well, we're not going to have space for, for much in the next couple of years, but we're very creative and flexible.
Would you, would you envision that, uh, I'm just, would they, would this, would these positions be in the administrative offices or does it really matter?
I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I, I, that's a.
Wherever you can fit them.
Wherever we can kind of create space and we're, we're currently in a heavy space analysis moment in both of our buildings.
I was going to say, maybe we should keep that red barn. Oh, that's what I was going to say.
The roads, the roads going in there.
Well, as we're, as we're sort of finalizing schedules at the junior senior high and plugging in, again, student needs first. You know, uh, uh, the lucky thing about life in two thousand eighteen is that administrators, my office is right here. Um, or sometimes even right here, as long as I can enlarge the text. Um, but, but, but we have a lot of flexibility and, and I think that, that is one of the great things about this district is that our, our staff have been incredibly flexible through a lot of challenges over the last couple of years. And so the fact that, you know, we now see the dirt being dug and some moot, positive movement. I think, I think people can hold on a little longer. There's, there's a lot of hope.
Find them a standing desk.
Exactly.
Stand in the hall.
That's what we have in some of the classrooms now. Right. We have our standing desks.
I still don't, it's great.
It is.
It makes it total.
It's amazing.
Yeah. All right. So this, you're going to let us know how the teachers, how receptive this is and how well it goes.
Yeah. So there are faculty meetings, not next week, but the following week, but I'm going to float it digitally. Um, and invite sort of feedback and make myself available in schools a couple of different times, um, next week.
What's the devil's advocate, you, if there is one of this, is there a, what's, what's the?
Uh, I mean, I, I, you know, I think part of your point, right? Who, uh, ha- who's the one person that we can go to if, if something comes up? And I, again, you, we have a lot of new players, right, in the district? So I think we're sort of, and, and we're losing a person who's been here for a long time and is really respected and trusted. So I think it's that, well, they say they're going to do it, but will they really do it? And so I, I think that's one of the, the worries that we're going to hear from people, which I totally understand. Sure.
Maybe designate a second or?
Oh, of course. And I, and I, and I certainly do. And I think as, you know, as people are getting to know Erica, who's just finishing her first year and as people are having interactions, you know, more consistently with, with Lisa in the business office and having the opportunity to see her, I think that builds some comfort. But our building principals are also, uh, they can also be designated to be the second person on, on a given day. And, and you know, there, there are rare times that I am, that I have not been, I, maybe twice.
I mean, we have these things now, right?
Right? Exactly. So.
It's exceptional.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, again, in terms of building capacity, right? Really, we're, we're trying to reach a place where any one of us ought to be, a- as an administrative team ought to be able to handle sort of whatever comes up in the district, reach out to colleagues and each other for support. Um, and kind of hold the fort on a, on a time being. And they're entrusted with doing that for five hundred plus students every day at the building level. I have full confidence, um, that at a district level, we're well prepared. And again, I think we've taken a lot of steps forward in our district wide sort of emergency planning and, um, training where I think people feel more confident in their ability to do some of that.
Aside from that administrative level, which I think, I, I think it makes sense what you said. What about at the, um, to get the, you know, the, the teacher, um, leadership, the teacher leadership position?
Right.
Did anybody, what's the objection, if anything, to that versus the structure we have now?
Um, but I, I, I'm sure there could be many.
You don't have to come up with one, but.
Yeah, no, I'm not, um, so I mean, I, I'm sure there's a worry about how do I balance that, right? With the, with the other responsibilities that I already have as a teacher? Are people going to feel like they're able to strike a good balance with that? Is it going to pull me out of the classroom? Right. There might be a worry though, is it going to pull me out of the classroom? And I would say we're really working not to do that. You know, those, those meetings with me or with the building level, those would be after school. Um, and you know, in terms of visiting another classroom, I would, you know, or covering for someone, that's most likely going to happen during their planning time, if that's how they choose to arrange it. Um, you know, but there may be some PD days that pull them out more than they have in the past.
It's mostly time shifting.
It is.
And they use the class, right?
Re-envisioning how you use your time and where, where you do it.
Right.
So a teacher who takes on that responsibility might have to do some of the planning at home.
Correct.
Because they're using their planning period to be in another classroom.
And that's really what that additional ten days is intended to provide for.
I'm going to have to.
Right? I'm giving up my planning time on Tuesday.
Right.
Um, but that counts as, you know, a chunk of my ten days.
I'm going to have to be in here maybe a few days before school starts or have to come in on Saturday afternoon instead of.
They all do anyway.
Yeah, or whatever, you know, those times when they would otherwise not be paid for. But because they're getting that supplemental pay, they say, okay, I'm going to time shift. We just do what we have to take, take you programs.
And, yeah, I, I'm sure they will be happy to tell us what their concerns are, you know, I hope so. Um, because again, this isn't, um, this is intended to, to hopefully help this district, you know, in the long term. Um, it, it may not be exactly the right way to go about it, but it, so we want to hear that. If there are other ideas and perspectives, then we'll come back to you with a proposal. And like everything else that we do, there's room to make adjustments moving forward. We're not locked into this for.
So this is bumpy.
It always sounds like it makes a lot of sense.
And I know, I appreciate Meredith hearing this in the meeting for the public to see. So we sort of have a sense of where we're going and what the rationale for it is and this discussion, I appreciate.
And my other thought is too, like, they can take classes. This is something we, that's part of their CBA.
Absolutely.
They get to take classes and, and work towards this if this is something they want to do.
And we have a lot of teachers now who are already taking teacher leadership courses or deepening their skills in a particular content area. Again, I think it's a really nice way to recognize that work. And in a, a district where retention has sometimes been a challenge, I think it really gives teachers who are looking to sort of stay in teaching, but advance a, a place to go, a place to land and do, do good work.
Yeah. And still be able to teach.
Yep.
And I think it's valuable for leadership development. And I think organizations, particularly small organizations, have a hard time building in a structure that allows for leadership development. Because it gets so tight that it's either, you're either here or you're there. And there's not any place in between for building that leadership potential. And you need experience and you need practice. And you need to look at yourself in a different way.
Right. And, and there are times now, you know, Mike asked the question about, well, who's in charge? Well, there are times now when teacher leaders, you know, those department chairs are the point person in the building. Because the administrators are at a meeting or at a training or, you know, whatever the issue may be. And, and to your point, that does take practice. And right now, we have some limited ways in which we're doing that. And we certainly district committees and school based committees are doing, are doing that work as well. And within teams, right, that, that work is occurring. But I think it's a way, um, to take it to that next level.
Kind of takes a little bit off our administrators too.
Absolutely.
Gives a little bit back, but takes a little bit off.
It does.
I, 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 I'm interested to see how they, everybody takes it.
Send these down. So we currently have, um, uh, uh, well, it's technically the behavior specialist position that are, um, the person in that position will be on leave next year. Um, that's a special ed funded position. So as we have looked at our needs in special ed for next year, right now that position is located, um, only at the junior senior high and serves grade six through twelve. Um, we have a need really pre K twelve for some of that behavioral support. But also a- again, as we've looked at our needs, it really is more of a, a social work support. So it's helping connect families with, um, mental health resources, for example, or, um, you know, providing some of that, it can still be providing some counseling to children and families. But it's, it's helping bridge some of those gaps that we have for families and students in our schools. So the proposal would be for one year only in the absence of our behavior specialist to, to try out. Um, this is a very, very draft position, not for approval tonight, um, but for one year only to try out a school social worker position K twelve, pre K twelve.
Okay. So this would be pre, pre K twelve?
Yes.
Both buildings.
Yes.
I might, I don't want to torture this, but is this what we were talking about in the context of the, um, the SRO?
So this is, conceptually, it's the same thing. Right now, this is repurposing a position that we already have that's vacant next year, um, to serve a, a pre K twelve need. It is not using the eighty thousand dollars that we're going to be talking more about, um, at another date, but yes.
But this, but this would be that we were talking about, you know, a couple of alternatives?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not going to read the job description to you, but again, part of it, uh, social workers training is in providing mental health support. Um, they also are e- experts in sort of coordinating with outside agencies and resources. So for our, um, children and families who are working with the Department of Health and Human Services or working with, um, outside therapists or, um, a juvenile parole and probation officer. It's a, it's a way to coordinate some of that work that right now is falling, um, often on the administrators or falling through the cracks. Um, um, providing referrals, again, um, you know, wait lists can be long. And sometimes the support of a social worker, helping families make those connections or know who to call can be really valuable. Um.
And probably following up too.
Absolutely. Um, the.
And this isn't taking away the importance of our SRO.
Oh, not at all.
I think that we just, there, there's bits and pieces. We still have Officer Stevens and we have the police department who help us tremendously. I think this, again, like Meredith says, that mental health aspect, community service aspect, community outreach.
No, Meredith, and I guess it's too soon to tell what would happen after next year for this.
Correct, correct. I think if, you know, as we test this position out, if we feel strongly that this is something that we need to continue, then it's a request we would need to build in our operating budget.
Okay.
Um, the, I, I think I've, I've mentioned this before, but we currently have, the behavior specialist is a certified counselor. And we have working at the junior senior high and then we have a junior high and a senior high counselor. So we have three counselors serving that population of roughly five hundred students. Um, at the elementary school, we have one counselor serving the population of roughly five hundred students. Now each building also has a psychologist, which is a great benefit to us. They spend a lot of their time in both buildings doing assessment, um, for special education. So they don't have as much time to do the direct care and the preventative care work. Um, they also don't have the time to do the service coordination.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
High level, Meredith, what's the difference between a behavioral specialist and a social worker?
Um, so a behavior, there is really no behavior specialist certification that exists. Um, licensed clinical social workers go, they're typically master's degree level. Um, they have been trained in social work, so in community work and understanding sort of systems and organizations. They're really experts in mental and emotional health and developmental needs of students. Um, a behavioral specialist, often those come out of, um, the behavior analyst field or special education field. Um, they are people who have a great deal of training also in sort of brain based needs, but behavior specifically. So they're more typically writing behavior plans, um, uh, making, um, adjustments, modifications to individual plans, providing support to children in behavioral crisis. Where a social worker is really looking big picture, proactively, long-term at how to meet the systemic needs of, of a family. Um, and, and, and again, in our case, a child situated within our community, which includes their family, our school, their classroom, um, at large.
And a behaviorist is somebody we could hire. If we had a case where you needed that, that's somebody we could outsource.
Yeah. So we currently have behavioral consultation that is a contracted service for us, um, through special education. So, so we already have that support in place in a contracted service way in K through twelve. Um, and, and special educators have training in writing behavior plans, school psychologists help write behavior plans. Um, and with an additional administrator, we feel like some of those immediate behavioral crises needs, um, will still have that support as well. So.
And that would be something that obviously we'd want feedback. We received some feedback and.
Yep. Yeah. So, so again, this isn't, this isn't taking off the table at all your conversation scheduled for the fifteenth where the board still, still wants some public input on whether or not to proceed with hiring a school resource officer at the elementary school and the idea of a social worker or behavior specialist came up, right? So that, that conversation will still happen. This is us looking at, as we move forward into next year and we look at K twelve and special education, pre K twelve and special education, what our most pressing needs are. Rather than a behavior specialist, um, serving population at one building. We really feel like we would be better served as a district by having a social worker, um, providing supports and connections pre K twelve.
Can, can, can one person handle?
Um, well, we don't, we have no person doing that now, right? Really, it's divided across our administrators.
But you do it right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're a reasonably sized district that, you know, I, I, I think we, we can do it. Um, and again, I think when you bring in a, a, a social worker, especially if we're fortunate to have someone who's got some clinical experience and, and who's worked in the field, um, I, I think they have a good understanding of where to set those boundaries and limits and say, I'm not gonna be able to take that on. And the administrators who've been doing that work before are still gonna be in play. Um, our psychologists and counselors who've been supporting that work are still gonna be, are still gonna be here and be available.
And the teachers that have been doing it in big, small ways too.
Uh, well, absolutely, I, yes.
Well, then you think that this would take some-
Of course.
Mm-hmm.
Pressure off the psychologists, like that, again, spreading, spreading the wealth, right? Spreading the job out a little bit will help build our, our building to-
And we think would also, back to the one building sort of paradigm, it will help follow.
Well, and so, so understand-
One building, then they, they're up at the other building, you kinda lose track of them, perhaps.
Or, or we're supporting a family, two different people are right now supporting a family that has children in both schools, right? And so we're fragmenting right now some of those supports, where if, if, if it's one point person, we're better able to really support the whole family and, and, and both children. Okay.
Is this, um, Meredith, how do you, uh, would this be, if, if this, um, proceeds, would it, would you expect it in September, starting in September? And, and, um, what are your thoughts in terms of, um, not, not public input, but would, would, do you think this is something that we add to the agenda on the fifteenth, or is this another discussion, or are we?
I, I, I see, uh, so the funds for this position are already within our operating budget. It's essentially changing, just as if we had ninety-five kindergarteners register, we would have to figure out, we need another kindergarten teacher. I really see this as, we've looked at our special education needs, we really need a social worker, instead of a behavior specialist. Um, a- a- again, the, the school resource officer is, i- is in my mind different from that. That wasn't an articulated need.
Right, yeah, right.
But it has emerged as, as one.
And how many days would this be, would this be a full-time position?
I would anticipate it as a, um, year-round, probably not year-round. We're, that, some of that is still in discussion. Certainly, I could see it being, um, similar to our psychologist, being full school year plus some additional days. The, and the challenge with a social work position, which is why we're still sort of working through some of these pieces. It's not necessarily a seven thirty to three job, right? It might be a six o'clock someday AM job, or a five PM some days job. And so, so we're gathering some information about how other districts are, are approaching that role.
So Elizabeth raises a fair point about, you know, if they stop in June and don't start for summer, so then what do you do with these? These had issues over the summer, um, and, and, you know, it's not, in a perfect world, we'd have, be able to staff and, and do all this. And, um, what, what, what's the best we can do there?
Yeah.
Just to keep continuity and, you know?
Well, I think it's similar to what we do with some of our other summer programming, right? So we really try to take a look at what are, what are those really pressing needs? Where, where might a student, or, you know, lose some significant ground without some summer intervention and support? Um, you know, one of the things that a social worker can do is coordinate summer mental health services, or summer, you know, childcare or camp opportunities, so that those pieces are really in place for a child and family over the summer. Um, but I, 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 I have seen that often, you know, maybe they work a day or two during the week throughout the summer program, um, so that they're kind of available and on staff, they have some additional coordination days built in, so that they can, um, kinda check in with families as the school year's approaching, and have a little time to check in as fa- as the school year winds down, to make sure all those pieces are in place. But, but we don't have the students here all summer long.
And also, if that social work position, we'd get that first, those children, hopefully by the end of the year, we'd have enough community service available. Like, that would all be in place.
So it, it would not be from a lack of effort on the part of the social worker? Again, we know, um, that those services are, are often hard to come by. There's a shortage of, um-
I was gonna say-
Available and affordable, um, mental health care.
Yeah, it's the connection with the state, the social work services, and does the county provide any?
Um, so Seacoast Mental Health, um, provides some of that work. Lamprey Health, um, in town, provides some of that support. They are a partner agency and, um, and receive some of, some of those supports. I would say there is not great depth, um, to that funding, just as there's not, you know, great depth to the education funding. Those resources are, are, um, scarce universally.
Sadly.
Certainly, yeah.
But I think we have seen some, um, greater attention to mental health statewide as well. And I, 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 I think that trend is going to continue, um, based on at least the dialogues that I'm in. So I'm optimistic about that, and I think, again, we can speak to sort of our local needs and, and here's what we see and why we think this would be valuable.
What can we do, Meredith, first this along, Ed, are you gonna get your vote from us, or?
I, I will, so right now, I view this as a draft. We'd wanna come back to you with further details. What I'd like to do with this, though, is post for an anticipated school social worker, um, so that we can start getting the word out and, and start collecting applications, and then come back to you at a next meeting with a final job description and salary and benefits information.
Excellent. Is anything else from you? Would you guys wanna do the quarterly financial next? Lisa, you wanna go ahead and do that?
Don't want one of them? We'll share.
Oh, there we go.
You guys need to do another one?
No, but Jen might need one.
Okay.
Oh, no, they're coming, there's enough.
So, um, basically, this, uh, this is the quarterly report for March. And, um, apologize for being a little late on this, but, um, missed thirteen, um, to report it out. So, um, with a little more information than I had last quarter, um, I'm able to forecast a little better and find that quarter over quarter, we've improved by about forty thousand dollars. Um, encumbrances, we're, uh, not all in when I previous did this, and we're in better shape to forecast and look at the health benefit elections and, um, staffing changes that have happened. So, we're in good position there. I do not have a separate chart, but I anticipate revenues to be also ahead by about, uh, eighty thousand coming year end. So, all in all, um, improvement to the fund balance of over two hundred and forty thousand dollars, with the forecast of combined expenditures of about a hundred and sixty thousand to the bill and about eighty revenue. So we're in good shape. Um, we're trying to push people to make sure they encumber and use the funds, um, for their supplies and things that they, they originally planned for. So, conservative look at it, um, we're in good shape. I don't know if there's any questions on anything specific. You'll also see, I guess one of the things to point out is the technology line. Um, if things all go this way, I'm planning a deficit on the first page, um, towards the bottom, uh, Fund twenty-two thirty. We won't need to use the capital reserve as planned, um, because right now I'm forecasting, including-
Including that deficit.
All, all those, um, uh, planned purchases to bring that into a deficit. And even with that, we should be in good shape, even able to absorb that. So if you recall, we had to reduce the budget to plan to use the reserves, so to this step, we can keep that money, that's a good thing.
If we need it for the new buil- for the new addition.
Or allocate it to offset tax increases moving forward, um.
And as we implement the one-to-one, so we'll have purchases there and down the road, hopefully, we need to go to that.
So, i- if you're looking at an eighteen million dollar budget, it sounds great that we're gonna have two hundred and forty thousand dollars left, but it's really like less than one and a half percent of our operating budget, so, uh, and again, that hundred thousand, that, i- you know, of technology, we had planned to tap into the technology reserve, so it's great if we're not gonna have to do that. But I, I just wanna say, two hundred and forty thousand, uh, thank goodness we're in the black and, uh, we would expect always to be in the black, but it's not by a very large margin, and, and I, I don't feel like this budget is padded. So.
Thank you, all right.
I did mean to mention that, um, Senate Bill one ninety-three was defeated today. Um, so, that is the, um, uh, school education savings account bill that we've talked about at prior meetings. So that is not on the table for the next legislative session. So I know we had projected that there was a potential revenue loss for next year related to that, so it was about forty thousand. Um, so, that's good news for us. It's tabled until at least next legislative session.
Thanks for that, thanks.
I, and before we forget, I wanna remind, uh, look at this. So we have a meeting scheduled for the, uh, when's graduation, you want the seventh?
We don't, but, but-
Oh, you have heard about that line, okay.
Yeah, yeah, next, and discussion item A.
That's a big one.
Meeting dates.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, we have a million, we have seventy-two different things to talk about. Um, next thing is committee reports. Um, I can say myself, I've been to the professional development committee this week and the healthcare study committee. Um, with the professional development committee, they were looking at planning the, uh, May eleventh half-day at both schools and for the special ed staff and the para professionals. Um, there was a good emphasis on including paras in the, in the professional development in a way they maybe haven't been in the past. And the para there was very positive about that. Um, and then they each, um, Erica and the two building principals both mapped out a plan, a tentative plan for PD for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Um, you know, I've, I've learned a considerable amount on that committee about the time that it goes into planning the professional development and that the, the, the skill that's used to do it, the skill of the presenters that come in to teach, to, to work with our educators. Um, and so I've appreciated that very much. Um, with the healthcare committee, we looked at comparing three of the main, uh, healthcare programs, sort of apples to apples, and thank you to Amy Rossi for compiling that data for us, um, to see where the differences were, to make a recommendation to the school board and the, um, well, make a tentative recommendation, just to give our thoughts, sort of an update to the school board and to the, um, teacher association. Any other committee reports, any committees meeting as of late?
No, the, uh, Seacoast School of Technology does not meet in April, and so our next meeting is next week, so.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just share a little building information?
Please do.
So the committee hasn't met, at our last meeting, the last building committee meeting, we talked about targeting a late May-ish date. Um, I hope to have a date set with the architects and Ekman, um, next week. We have a, a conference call, the number, number one on pilots to do. Um, but I just wanna thank the community for their patience with a lot of heavy equipment moving around. We had a lot of truckloads of gravel coming through and a lot of signs up. Um, we've made really great progress on the Carpenter property site, um, and Greg certainly jump in if I, if I leave anything out. Um, but, but that's moving along. We expect the work there to be completed pretty close to the end of May. Um, we are, are in discussions with them about whether or not we might be able to provide some access to behind the high school. It would obviously be fenced off before the end of the school year. Um, the, there are some obvious logistical details that we would wanna work out in order to, to do that. But at the same time, if we can make it work, knowing how much needs to happen on that site during the summer, um, we're gonna do our best to, to work with them around that.
How about graduation, are we gonna be able to use across the street for graduation?
We are not expecting to use across the street for graduation. Um, the junior senior high has known that for a while, and I know Mr. Mizony, um, and I have both spoken with Lamprey Healthcare, who have graciously offered to allow parking at their site, um, for graduation evening, as well as our elementary building will be available. And Mr. Mizony was, um, going to be reaching out to senior families to sort of request who might need, um, easy access to the building, or, to be in close proximity to the building. Um, if need be, we also have access to the municipal lots, and if we need to run a shuttle bus, um, to provide some support to people, for a student will work with us to do that.
So Meredith, after, um, school is out, is, did they, did they get the fencing all around?
So, so June twenty se- he asked if the fencing would be going up more or less on June twenty-second, and, and the answer is pretty close. Um, they're, they're raring to go. So we anticipate shutting down, um, other than very limited staff access, largely our custodial crew and technology folks, um, to the junior senior high at the end of the day on the twenty-second. And then at the elementary school, we'll continue to have access through the front of the building, but driving behind the building will be sort of fenced off and closed off almost immediately. We do have to relocate the portables, but essentially, other than that, those areas will be fenced off. Um, at the elementary school, obviously, some, if, again, if you've driven by, the construction fencing is up at, at the McGrath property. Um, we expect the, um, property line fence along Pond Street to also be in roughly the end of May. Your, Greg is nodding in agreement.
I'm sorry?
I don't have my notes in front of me, but, um, and then, uh, that driveway, if you're, again, if you're driving by, you can already see, sort of they framed up where the, the primary road will be there, um, that goes behind the school. We had a meeting with the fire marshal's office this week, and so that road was originally specked at sixteen feet. Through conversations locally, um, the fire marshal's office has asked us to widen that to twenty feet. So that change is being made in order to comply with the fire marshal. We still have a couple of fire marshal things under review. Um, and then, what am I missing? Oh, Department of Transportation, um, had made one more request to us about some, um, property survey information from nineteen seventy-one. So we had to do a little back in time search for that. Yes, so they were, so they were, a- as they make their determinations, they're looking at all the original property lines and all the history of that piece and the curb cuts.
I wonder if they do with the development of the fields out back, that, that was right around that time, I think.
Could have been.
Yeah.
At any rate, we provided that information to them late last week, I believe. Um, so we're anticipating that we'll hear from them relatively soon and, um, continuing to move forward. The construction meetings are happening every other week now, um, and there are, um, weekly meetings, shorter weekly meetings, starting with the site superintendent, um, principal, Greg, and, and myself, so that we're just keeping the building pieces in focus, and then the bigger picture pieces are moving quickly as we gear up for summer. Yay!
It's exciting to see, when I drove by today at the McGrath and I could see the, where the road was actually gonna be, it was sort of neat to see the plans come to life in a real sort of way, so, again, thank you to everybody.
Yeah, and again, I think, I thank the community and all of our neighbors for their patience. You know, big equipment is noisy, um, you know, it, it, it doesn't always look the most attractive looking out your window, but, but we know that the community gave us great support on this project, and we hope that they feel as we do, that this is a, a temporary bit of pain that will, um, you know, result in great school facilities that will help the community moving forward.
And then we have a, uh, document here about the cemetery work too, and I think, not only, I guess, do we have to do that, but I think it's the right thing to do, I think it's the respectful thing to do, I think it'll look better.
Agreed.
And kinda need that little piece of history right there, I don't think many people know about it.
Yeah, well, well-
Back of the McGrath property.
Yeah, well, so, yes, we have an approval in there, I think, for that coming up, so we can speak to that a li- is that the cemetery?
Yes.
In our packet, yes. We'll speak to that in a few minutes.
All right, Elizabeth, you talked a minute ago about our meeting dates, and I sent an email to everyone on Tuesday. And so we sort of have to, to, to work around a couple of things. As we know, um, it's May third, June is gonna be here around the corner, then comes the summer, then we're back in August. So I sort of wanted to map out, wow! And then it's Christmas time.
I like spring, we went from winter to summer.
Exactly. Fifty-one day, ninety the next. That's how we do things in Newmarket. Um, so we sort of need to, to intentionally plan these next few weeks, months. You know, the first thing, um, there were a couple of people that we, we had planned for our school board retreat, which I think is very crucial for all of us to be there if possible, on March nineteenth. That has proven to be a date that cannot work for everyone. So my question is, um, and I think I had sent another email asking you to sort of bring your calendars if you thought of it, um, for us to come up with another date that works for that, for as many of us as possible. I'd, I reached out to, um, Al, who is on this huge absence night for his dates. I have not heard from him as of yet, but I will follow up with him on, are there any- I, I reached out to Al, who is on this huge absence tonight for his dates. I have not heard from him as of yet, but I will follow up with him on, are there any dates? Let me look at.
Rather not over the holiday weekend.
Oh, no, I'm gone.
Yeah.
What about June second? Is that just rude? Or would that work?
It would be, I will say it would be personally difficult on that day because both my children have commitments that I'm supposed to be in attendance at. And I normally try to be really flexible, but that one is gonna be hard.
Friday evening the first. If we got here at four, well, what's, what's the earliest everybody could get here, I guess?
I could be here at four.
Could you do that? I mean, then we, we take care of it. We're here, we buckle down. We're here, if that's what we have to do. Let's try to be comfortable when we do it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna strive for discomfort, actually. No, I'm just kidding. Does that work? Meredith, does that work for your schedule?
It does.
It works for my schedule.
I mean, we just have to realize we're probably gonna be here.
Yes, I mean, and what, sort of what, now that we're having a, a buffer more time, I got those three books I told you about. I'm gonna take one, Meredith's gonna take one, we're going, and then we're gonna sort of do the third one together to come up with something. And then there's some, some, some work that we can do collectively in at least one of those books to help guide us through the time. So, let's say the first. Yes, no, yeah. I mean, I think, I think. You know, the, the shift to the business meeting, the business meeting once a month and the workshop once a month, those, those types of things. But I think also, we need to really carve out some time, in my thought, to talk about the communication piece. You know, but I, I think, I can only speak for myself, but even in the last few meetings, I've seen a shift in that, in the way people are sharing openly and discussing things candidly and going through topics. So I think, where, you know, it's just a matter of just refining that. And then also looking at expectations, because we're getting to the point where Meredith's evaluation is gonna come again. And we are at a point where we still have not given concrete, so that needs to be part of that conversation too, I would think. And you guys, you know, can send me other thoughts, but I think those are the main things that we need to look at. Planning, you know, what, what the meetings look like going forward. Even if it's a situation where we look at the workshops and determine sort of tentatively what's gonna be talked about at each one, and maybe each of us take one or come up with some plan for that specific topic or something of that nature. And then communication and then expectations for Meredith, you know, and then strategic planning comes up in a later, those types of things. Just brainstorm what those ideas would be for those workshops for the next year.
And put this, can we, this is totally out there, but can we do an exit interview with Chris and Driski just to see his thoughts as he leaves, what he thought of the improvements? And we can use those towards summer out thoughts too. Is that, is that okay?
For the board to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, as long as he's comfortable with that.
Well, I mean, I think, I think it's a, it's a, he has a wealth of knowledge in terms of time in the district and a perspect, a unique perspective on various levels of employment in the district. Maybe he can give us some feedback.
That's what I was thinking, as we talked and I, so I didn't know if we were allowed to do that.
Okay, Meredith, will you, would you like me to reach out to him?
I think you have to decide when, when you're planning to do that, so.
I'll, I'll reach out to him and see if he's willing and then we'll come up.
Believe me, we have one every day.
Um, alright, so now that we have.
Window closes, yes.
The June first retreat scheduled.
So that's at four o'clock, starting at four o'clock?
Let's say four o'clock.
Okay, until?
Until, let's see.
Yeah, based on, you have to confirm with Al.
Yes, we'll con, I will, I will confirm with Al, but tentatively, let's say that. And the next question becomes our business meetings. We originally had the one scheduled for tonight and then had canceled the one for the seventeenth because we were meeting on the nineteenth. Meredith had a start.
I now have plans on the seventeenth.
Meredith had a thought last night that I think might make sense. One of our other bill, meetings is the public forum on the fifteenth. Would you guys be amenable to having a special business meeting after that meeting? In lieu of the meeting on the seventeenth? So we have the public forum followed by a short.
What time is that public forum?
Six thirty. June first, June first, Friday, June first. Yeah, Friday, and I will send all this stuff out again if, if you guys will find that helpful.
You know, I, I mean, we're, I'm here and so that.
And then we would not have the meeting on the seventeenth. So, so we would have a meeting, two, sort of two meetings on the night of the fifteenth. And if we were at a point where we, you know, we'd gotten what we felt like was a relative amount of feedback about the S R O, we might wanna proceed with holding the vote on that right after, immediately after that. And then depending on what's decided, come up with a course of action for that at that time. So that would be both things on the, on the fifteenth. The next thing is, if we move into June, we, we originally had a June seventh meeting scheduled and June fourteenth meeting scheduled. June se, twenty-first. June seventh is the awards night for the graduation. I suggested in my email that we do not have that meeting that night, just for very sundry reasons. And the question becomes, I, I'd suggest that we hold our meeting on the thirty-first. Ingrid has the SST graduation that night.
It's not that, it's their awards, it's their awards ceremony. Meredith and I did the dash last year.
It, it also is the night of the elementary band concert.
Alright, so let's look at this a different way, 'cause we don't wanna, we wanna allow people to go to as many things as possible.
I will tell you, just real quick, on the seventh, is, as a board member, you might wanna go to that. You get to see how much money.
Or a parent of a graduate.
A parent, but you'll be there. But you get to see the money that scholarships are given and people have been doing it for years.
How does the school know that? How does the school know that? How much?
These are local scholarships.
Oh, I thought, I'm like, why are we supposed to report that? Um, anyway, so the question becomes, what do we do with our June meetings? Do we split the difference and have a meeting on the fourteenth and have that be our final meeting?
Are we restricted to Thursdays?
It just gets complicated, Mike, when we tweak it around just because of other things in the building. We didn't really try to stick, but I'm open to changing it.
Maybe the fourteenth, we start early and plug for.
Whatever needs to happen.
Was, was there another event on the fourteenth?
Uh, no, there is not another event on the fourteenth. So let's do the, so you wanna, so tentatively, if I'm reading this correctly, and you guys can correct me, 'cause you know I get confused.
So here, here would be my worry between May fifteenth and June fourteenth, if you have no meeting, I'm really worried about hiring. And the risk of losing candidates.
Alright, so that's not a good idea.
We, we don't wanna put that on the retreat, that's.
So could we do, I know that, could we have a meeting on the fifth, Meredith? I, Mike, if we move.
Or sometime between that fall, in those last two weeks of May.
Alright, so that's.
Other than the thirty-first.
Cause the nineteenth, so the week, next week, no.
And we said the twenty-fourth at May doesn't work?
The twenty-fourth of May could work for me.
The twenty-third does not work.
Twenty-fourth?
Could work.
That would put us at the, if we did that, that would be the, the, the public forum and the meeting on the fifteenth. And then a regular business meeting on the twenty-fourth. And then another meeting on this, on the fourteenth of June. If there's some reason, Meredith, in, in that lengthy, um, time that we need to have some sort of special business meeting, I would assume that you would let us know and we could schedule that as well. Does that make sense? Am I?
So I'm looking, so what's it, it's the third, so we're looking at the twenty-fourth.
We're looking at the fifteenth for the public forum and the special business meeting. Then we're looking at the twenty-fourth for a regular school board meeting. Then we're looking at Ju, Friday, June first for the retreat. And then we're looking at June fourteenth for tentatively the final, um,
Business meeting.
Meeting of the, until, until, for the summer break. No, June twenty-first.
Would you like me to attend by May fifteenth?
If you would like to, yes. It's up to you.
And do you wanna bring the next person with you? Do we know that for sure?
Um, we do not know who that's going to be. I've talked to a few people who are interested in it. And they're currently voting on that and then voting will be in the next few weeks.
Perfect. And then, you know, obviously, this is a fluid thing. Um, you know, we need to, to, to keep to our schedule as much as we can, but take a look at it in the next twenty-four, and I will share all this with Al to make sure this all works for him as well. And then the question becomes, assuming that we take July off entirely and the beginning of August, when we resume with meetings in the fall. My question there was either the twenty-third, which is a week before the school starts again, or the thirtieth, which is the day that the teachers come back, which is a hard day for Meredith.
And that, well, the hard, the twenty-third, we're all college kids, right?
I will, on the twenty-third, but I'll be, I, I would, it's close, I'll be back. So.
My preference would be though, even, again, even if it can't be on a Thursday, to try to target sometime in that week, rather than that week that staff come back and school opens, especially given the construction.
Should we, can we say for that week with the twenty-first work? If we move to a Tuesday for the twenty-first of August, Mike, would that work, August twenty-first for returning? Is that too, is it too hard to tell? Well, let's just, let's just pencil that in.
Yes.
And, and that way, it'll be well before the staff comes, um, and we can get, hit the ground running then. And then start with September, the fir, the September sixth meeting after school.
So twenty-first of August on Tuesday.
Yep. Yep, and I, as I said, I will get this together in an email and send it out to everyone tomorrow.
And you know what? We could do that earlier than seven too, right?
We'll, on this.
On the twen, August twenty-first, if you're.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see. I mean, I know it gets dicey with people going away, especially at those tail end, but, you know, just to have that sort of in mind just sort of helps us all. So that's, that, we'll get that firmed up, but thank you for that and your flexibility with it again, as I always say. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the committee process that we can finally finalize if we can. Um, I'm gonna have faith that we will. Um, the main, basically, we decided that the committees, as they stood for this year, were going to remain the same. Which would be me as the chair, Elizabeth as the vice chair, Elizabeth as the budget committee representative. We didn't have an alternate to the budget committee. We'll see about the, we'll see about that.
Well, Mike said he would step in if I ever needed him.
Okay, and as he's been on that, that probably makes sense. The policy committee, we did not come with a situation with. I was talking with Meredith about it, I think, after that meeting. And, and what we might wanna look at with that is maybe as newer people come on to the board, maybe that's one of the first assignments that people go into, since the policy is the fundamental thing that we're supposed to be doing, or one of the three fundamental things. So Ingrid, maybe if you could join me on that one for this, if you would be willing to. So that we can really start tangibly working with Meredith on a, a concrete process to get the policy situated. So Ingrid will put, put you in there. For the building committee, Mike and Al will remain on that. Ingrid will continue with Seco's learning collaborative. Um, staff development. I think that's me too. I have not been to a meeting. We do not, the, the, the New Hampshire school board is a roving one. Um, Mike and I will be doing the negotiations. Um, and Mike, we talked about that before. You know, once the association comes up with their team, we'll probably meet in June to review the dates for the fall. So, so that's, another thing with that for the entire board is that, oh, we gotta come up with a date for this. In, in late June, we're gonna need to come together, um, as a board with a legal representative to talk about the contract as it is and sort of go through some areas of that.
So if, if we schedule a meeting for May twenty-fourth, we could potentially have an initial, we can see if that would be possible to do a, a, a meeting on that date, and then we have the fourteenth available to us as well.
Okay.
Um, as an option.
Okay. Basically, so that we're all sort of aware of what the contract says and, and hi, his initial assessment of it as Mike and I proceed with that process. So that's happening too.
We need to plan a seat on that front because there may be some progress that the board systemically or strategically wants to make. You know, that, that, that impacts the, positively the, that collective bargaining agreement ultimately, or at least maybe how we approach it. So in, in, the school board as a collectively are gonna wanna know what that, and, and agree on that general direction.
That's the intent, of having a non-meeting, to be able to discuss, for negotiations planning essentially.
Yes, I didn't articulate it properly.
No, 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 I, I just missed it. Um, so, um, but it just, it seems like, you know, we've got a lot of things coming together at once, like strategic planning, all works into this, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'd like to think that we're, we're thinking of that negotiation as part, obviously, of our long-term planning, getting to where we need to be, which we haven't decided yet. You know, we're heading in certain directions forward, but you know what I mean? So it's like, maybe that's another item at the retreat that we start, maybe not finish, obviously.
Excellent point.
So your retreat is a public meeting, and I'm, would just suggest to the board that you probably don't wanna be discussing your negotiation strategy in a public meeting?
No, we don't. That's not what I was getting at. What I was getting at is that, you know, where are we going? You know what I mean? And, because I think we have to have that idea before we can arrive on a strategy in a non-public for, you know, how we get there and how, how we work as a team to get there. But that's what I was thinking.
Sort of a strategic planning overview of where all the pieces will sort of fit.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead a little bit. It's just like, we, we, we wanna, um, we may have some ideas in mind about where we wanna be as, as a district and certain things. And that may impact how we would approach that collective bargaining agreement. And I just want us as a board to have a sense of where, what, what our direction is before we set out negotiating. I guess that's.
Makes sense.
And I'll say, and this'll be the first time this board has done it. And we also have, have a superintendent that will, so it would actually quite benefit a lot of people.
It does. It does. And I think that's why it's good to have legal counsel come in and help us all through the process. The beginning of the process, moving into it.
So that's scheduled, we're looking at that kind of.
It's, it's, they're gonna.
We'll try and tie those into those meeting dates that you just set, once you confirm those.
Yes. Um, I am on the health benefits study committee. Now, we have school board.
That's a duplicate.
Yes, with, I thought so. Ingrid is on the teacher evaluation and Al is on C I P. Um, I seek a motion to approve all the committee assignments that'll be in place through March two thousand nineteen. A motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison, to approve the committee assignments through March of next year. Any discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, well, I'm gonna have some. Thank you to everyone for the time that you spend outside of the board meetings for work on these committees. I appreciate it very much.
Well, and I was just gonna say, Kim, if this gets overwhelming, then you can revisit this.
I'll have to see, once the negotiation happens, what that does.
Yeah.
But, um, the rest of it, right now, I'm doing alright.
Health benefits will be wrapping up.
Yeah, it's wrapping up.
For example, that.
It's wrapping up. And I've learned a lot about stuff that I didn't know with health benefits, so it's been, I've benefited from the health benefit. Alright, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the committee assignments, say aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. Alright, we are at the old approval of the minutes, and yes, yet again, we will kick the March twenty-first, twenty-second public meeting minutes down the road. But I seek a motion to approve the April nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, public and non-public minutes. On a motion from Ms. Alberg, a second from Ms. McKenny, to approve the April nineteenth public and non-public minutes. Are there any amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, we will move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ingrid, do you have the manifests?
I do. I move that we approve the manifest for a total of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. That includes the payroll manifest, the accounts payable manifest, and the total bond payable manifest.
Second. A motion from Ms. Alberg, a second from me, to approve the manifests as listed. Any amendments to that? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the manifests, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is a security vendor approval request, a memo from Greg and to Meredith. Meredith, if you and or Greg wanted to. The next thing is a security vendor, uh, approval request, a memo from Greg, and, uh, to Meredith, Meredith, if you and or Greg wanted to update us on that, that would be great.
Sure, so Greg, I will start, and again, Greg's here if you have questions, and I, when I asked if the cemetery was on the agenda, I, we did approve that at the last meeting, so not to digress, but, but we do have a cemetery on the old McGrath property, which is now part of the school property, so at our last meeting, we approved, uh, contractor to come in and kinda clean up that area, it does have a Revolutionary War, um, person in it, and so I think as we get it cleaned up and, and kinda straightened up, it will be an interesting historical opportunity for students moving forward.
That's amazing.
Um, but, I digress, back to the item at hand. Um, as you know, we have been looking at school security over time, we submitted our infrastructure grant application, this is continuing work that the board began prior to my arrival. Um, and a lot of security upgrades, and as we move forward into construction, there is more to do on that front. Um, we have also been working, um, with the town to coordinate those resources, so that the police department has one place to log in as opposed to multiple, so that they have one set of keys to be able to get into buildings or badges, as opposed to multiple. Um, so the recommendation to you, um, based on that, is that we fall under our bidding process, there are a couple of, um, noted exceptions under that policy, and those exceptions um, are for sole source or for kind of shared purchasing, because we're looking to integrate our security services with the town. Um, we are recommending that we, or suggesting that we meet the exceptions under that policy, um, and that we proceed with awarding the, um, R F P two, Securideon Services to do the work at the junior, senior high and elementary school for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents, a hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and fifty of that is coming out of the Homeland Security Grant that, um, has already been approved, and the remaining forty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars fifty-two cents is already budgeted in our construction costs.
Any questions about this? Alright, motion from Mr. Kennison, a second, a second from Ms. Alberg, to approve this, um, security vendor from Securideon Systems. Um, any discussion, any questions about it?
I will pull mine back until, oh, I don't care. I can't get this to work.
Do you have a question?
This, this is just on security.
Mm-hmm, just security. It's security, and the bulk of it is from the Homeland Security Grant, and then forty-seven, four, forty-two, fifty-two in the building costs.
I think the electronic copy, there was some, um, some figuring that we tend to be, should have corrected, and it seems to be correct as of right now.
Alright, any more questions before we move to the vote? Let's move to the vote, um, all those in favor of approving this contract and awarding it, say aye.
Aye.
Awarded. The next thing is the, um, renewal of the linked-together lease for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
So again, you had a, at least two-year lease in place, um, we're recommending an extension of that for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year for linked-together, I have met with Ree Cooper about that. Um, as we're still in construction, I don't wanna get further ahead than a year at this point, um.
Sorry, Mia.
Yeah.
Next time, we should just, yeah, for somebody doesn't have to sit here.
I know.
I didn't even think about it.
Couple of, so whatever.
Point taken. Um, at any rate, so we are recommending that we, uh, this is the word for word, other than changes of dates, the same, um, contract that we've had in place for linked-together, so we're recommending approval of that through June twenty-first of two thousand nineteen.
Zeke, a motion to approve the, uh, renew the linked-together lease for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Second.
Motion from Ms. McKenna, a second from Mr. Kennison, to approve the, renew the lease of linked-together from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving the lease, please say aye.
Aye.
The last thing that we have on this part of the agenda is the approval of the teacher evaluation assistance model that we reviewed la, that, uh, super, assistant superintendent Andruski and members of the team came to talk to us about last time. Um, I seek a motion to approve it.
Well, it's a good question.
Yes.
Do we vote on it, then we'll discuss it? Well, this is how I think.
Yeah.
So these, they're gonna be in construction, they won't be big, they won't have any points taken off that their rooms aren't pretty.
Linked-together?
No.
Oh, teachers.
Teachers, you know, when it's like, how's your room look? And I just, I was like, oh, I just don't want them to think, they need to put some rooms up.
That is a good point, we can reassure people that if they have no floor tiles, or missing ceiling tiles, that they will not be held responsible.
Your, your bookcases are gone, so.
Exactly, right, no, but that, no, that's a, you know, a fair point. It is, it is not the intent of us to penalize people for things beyond their control.
Right, and I don't want them to, you know, you're looking through it and you're thinking, oh, what do I have to do to do really well on this, oh my god, my room. Alright, so you need to.
I seek a motion to approve the teacher evaluation assistance model.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion from Ms. Alberg, a second from Ms. McKenna, is there any discussion? You know, I think, I think the thing that's important in it is that, you know, the focus on this that I saw is really, um, teacher, um, instruction and things of that nature, and, you know, that is so important, I think it's, it's the benefits to this new process is it's so structured and delineated, so that people will have a clear idea of what is expected of them. Don't choke.
When I saw the. When you think about this and the, the leaders.
Yep. Yep, and maybe there's a way, you know, maybe as a part of my evaluation process, I say, Elizabeth, you're the leader in my content area, I have a challenge in X Y Z area, can we, can you mentor me in the way to improve this area? Um, I, I think we both benefit from that. Alright, hearing no further discussion, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving the teacher evaluation assistance model, say aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. The next thing is, um, I seek a motion, oh, before I go into this, um, just to sort of review, our next, uh, meeting as a board will be May fifteenth for the public forum, for the, uh, student, uh, school resource officer at the elementary school. Um, there'll be a, a communication going out tomorrow to all the viable, through all our viable means, to get people to come to provide, um, input that night. One thing that Meredith was talking about is, um, it might be a warmer environment if we have it in one of the schools as opposed to the, um, the auditorium, so that's, I think that's where we need to have it. Um, so that'll be determined tomorrow, and I'll have to give you guys on that, but I think.
Bandroom or library, I just, um, my concern about holding it in an auditorium, if you're really trying to invite conversation, is the formality sometimes of that table and microphone setup
Right, right, right.
can feel, um, less inviting.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, so we'll have it there, and then we'll, we'd have our meeting immediately at the, at the school as well.
And then people who haven't been in the high school too.
Yep, yep, exactly, so.
You've said it, Kim, but I, I would just invite people to come out, this is, you know, we're trying to do the right thing, um, but we don't concede, admit to have all the answers or, um, you know, to be the experts on this, so you know, we appreciate what folks have given us so far, and I've read it, and, and I, I appreciate it, so.
Excellent, it's, it's.
Come out and, come out and let us know what you're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is sort of a, a paradigm shift in a lot of ways of, of the way that we run things in school, and I think we wanna make sure that people, um, have the ability to share their concern with us in this way, and I think it's yet another way to do it, so I encourage people to come and look for the announcements tomorrow.
Chief Tru will be there as well.
Yes, yes, and, you know, it'll, eh, from the way that I sort of envision is, is sort of an opening and just allow people to, to provide their feedback as they will, so. Alright, I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three, two A.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. McKenna, a second from Mr. Kennison, to go into non-public session, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Alberg.
Aye.
Mr. Kennison.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Shelton, eh, and we are in at seven thirty-six, Catherine, thank you very much.
Thank you.